Hey Kim. You're muted, but it's okay. I saw you say hi.
Oh, I said hi, Beth. How are you?
Good.
Muted.
How are you?
I'm okay, thanks.
Are you feeling better?
A little tired. I slept lousy last night. I don't know nights in a row, actually. I don't know why.
Hi Valerie. Hi Kim.
Hey Kat.
Hello, folks.
Hey Maggie.
Hi Maggie.
Hello, Dr. Horsley.
Oh, I called her Valerie. Are we doing Dr. Horsley? I'm happy to do that.
Just on the official part.
You know, Valerie, I've always meant to ask you, occasionally I'll say Val. Is Val something you like?
It's okay for you because you're a friend of mine. I don't like it when people don't know me well and they say Val. And my grandmother, she refused to acknowledge that anyone could call me Val. She was like, told my parents, I don't like that name because it sounds masculine if people say Val. But I'm good as long as, I just think if it's the first time meeting someone and they call me Val, I'm like, hmm.
That's a little informal. Yeah.
Yeah.
I can relate to that. I have a long and short version of my name.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah.
Hi Bethany.
Hey, everybody. How are you?
Marjorie.
Thank you for coming tonight, Bethany and the whole Quinnipiac team.
Absolutely. Thanks for having us.
I'm excited to see the plan. It looks really cool.
Nick, I had sent you the executive summary. Did that go out to the group?
Um, Kim, did we send that around?
I got it done, yes. Is it the pamphlet thing?
Um, so I don't see you on the email that I sent, Kim, so.
And it didn't go around?
Well, I might have forwarded it to Kim. I'm trying to remember.
Okay, if you supported it, Kim. I sent it to Nick.
It's not what we have as backup, is it, Nick? With the agenda?
We have like a pamphlet in the back. I'm not sure. Do you consider that the executive summary or?
The executive summary, yeah.
Okay.
Um, let me.
I'm gonna send it to you right now.
Okay, then, yes. Yeah. Okay.
Just checking in on a couple folks, see if we're waiting for anyone else. Marjorie, do you know if Betty and Austin were planning on being able to attend the special meeting?
I believe so, yes. I can put out a phone text or something.
Yeah, just checking. We'll give them another minute if they're on their way, but otherwise we should get started soon. And I think Jody might have to work. Oh, there's Berita. Not too many left.
Good evening.
Good evening, Berita. There's Mr. Caesar. Ms. Wetmore is trying to, and I don't see her here yet.
Just checking my volume. Is my volume working? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Kim, could you send Ms. Wetmore the link to the meeting, please? And then I think if we can get her settled, then we'll be all set to go. We'll get started, so, Ms. Zemba and her team can start with a presentation I'm very much looking forward to. Who else? Ms. Gary. And, like I said, I think Ms. Klaus has to work.
I just sent it to Betty.
Levin. Um, Betty, Julie. Gina. Yeah. Okay, well, when we get the meeting started and hopefully Ms. Gary and Ms. Wetmore, and Ms. Klaus, if she can make it, will join us.
Should we kick it off, Nick?
Yep, I'm just gonna get it started. In fact, if you don't mind, I'm going to, as our guest, I'll ask you to leave the pledge when that time comes. Just checking, texting. Ms. Gary, and so why don't we get started? I'll go ahead and open this special meeting of the Hampton Legislative Council at 6:39 PM. Ms. Renta, could you take the role, please?
Ms. Baez?
Here.
Ms. Bonnies?
Here.
Mr. Caesar?
Here.
Ms. Klaus? Ms. Dolan?
Here.
Mr. Farmer?
Position.
Ms. Horsley?
Here.
Ms. Gary? Mr. McDowell?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Present.
Ms. Roy Lewis? Ms. Shoemaker?
Present.
Present.
Ms. Wetmore?
Here.
Thank you very much. Ms. Renta, and in just a moment, we'll have our Pledge Allegiance in a moment of silence. And during our moment of silence, and I'll, at our regular council meeting, ask to keep hold these families in our hearts again. But if we could keep the family of Marquise Winfrey, who died of gun violence here in Hampden recently, and Mango Horsley, who also passed in a car accident. So we can hold those families in our hearts, as well as Ms. Gary. Ms. Baez, just reminding you that Ms. Gary is, you know, dealing with a terrible loss in her family as well, her sister. So if we could hold those folks in our hearts during a moment of silence. And Ms. Zemba, as our guest, would you mind bringing us in the Pledge Allegiance?
Oh, you didn't prepare me for this. Okay, will other people say it with me?
Yes, we will.
Okay. All right, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Okay, we have one item on the agenda this evening, and that is the receiving the Quinnipiac University's master plan. Ms. Zemba, do you need someone on your team to be able to share the screen so we can make them co-host if you have things to share?
I don't think that's necessary. Sal, can you confirm?
Yeah, no, we're just gonna talk through, I mean, if you all have that pamphlet, that's really helpful, but we're gonna talk through some of the major points of the master plan.
Okay, would it be helpful to have that pamphlet, Ms. Renta could share her screen with the pamphlet if that'd be helpful for you? It's your call.
So we're hoping that this is more of a conversation and just kind of explain in, Bethany's gonna talk a little bit about what the process to come to get to the master plan, and then I'm gonna share some of the strategic strategies built into the master plan and take it from there. So we're not, and Tom is gonna talk a little bit about some of our programming that we're planning for the student experience. So I think we really, we think it's beneficial to go through the pamphlet and you get a feel for some of the things we're gonna mention, pictures and things like that. But I think we're really looking for it to be a conversation.
Certainly. That sounds great.
Okay, so we'll just do quick introductions of who we have here from the Quinnipiac team. Bernie, would you like to do that?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Bernard Pellegrino. I'm an attorney with the Pellegrino Law Firm. I've had the good fortune to have represented the university before the various land use commissions in town for the past 25 years, and pleased to be with you this evening. I'll just introduce everybody and they'll take it from here. But with us today is Bethany Zemba, who you'll hear from in a minute. She's Chief of Staff to the Office of the President. Sal Falardi is here. He's Vice President of Facilities and Master Planning. We have Tom Ellett, who you'll hear from also, and Daryl Richard has joined us. So we have many of the senior administrators of the university here with you this evening. And as I said, we're we're happy to be here. We're pleased to be here. We don't get here in front of this board and group on a regular basis, but it's good to be here and I see some familiar faces. So it's good to see everybody. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bethany to kind of set the table for us.
Sure. Great. Thanks, Bernie. So just so you're aware, Tom Ellett is our Chief Experience Officer, and he's been with the university for about six months. And Daryl Richard is our Vice President for Marketing and Communications. So we have, as Bernie mentioned, a team of people here, and please feel free to ask us questions along the way. As Sal mentioned, we really do want this to be more of a conversation. We come to you today with our master facilities plan, which is a roadmap for our facilities that is directly tied to our strategic plan. Our strategic plan, we had discussed, oh, it feels like a while back now, it's probably about a year to 18 months ago. I had talked to you and presented that, and that's a five-year plan. This is obviously, anything with facilities tends to be a bit more longer range. So this is something that's really visionary. It's exciting, and it helps us, it'll help guide us as we think about what we hope to achieve at the university. We want the town to be part of the process, and we have engaged them. We had a really great planning group who helped us along the way with this plan. And so they did a lot of focus groups. They met with various constituents, and part of that was the community in Hampden and North Haven. So we did have some meetings with planning and zoning officials in Hampden and North Haven. Mick McGary actually made it to a couple of the meetings. Julie Smith from the Town Hall. Mayor Lang, we had conversations with First Selectman Mike Frida in North Haven. Also, some community members, Paul Geary. And obviously, we also talked to our internal community, faculty, staff, students, and alumni. There are a lot of common themes that I think came out as important guideposts as we move forward with the process. So today, we talked to you, last week, we talked to a few other groups. We presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for Hampden. We also met with the Sleeping Giant Association President, the Westwood Association President, and the Blue Hills Association President. So we we kind of reached out to some of those community groups that live near our campus and often have expressed comments and thoughts, both to this group and also to planning and zoning, because again, we want to be inclusive, and we want to have dialogue, conversation, and have shared interests wherever is possible. I think this group also knows that there is two planning groups that meet monthly to convene and talk about things related to Hampden and Quinnipiac. So one is the Off-Campus Housing Task Force. And Mick sits on that, and also our Fire Chief, Chief Murray, the Chief Sullivan, people are Chief Experience Officer Tom, who's here, our Dean of Students Monique. So we have a student rep. You know, all of that is continuing to happen, those meetings. And then we also have one that is really looking at community building, and it's a community partnership engagement council. And we have various members who serve on that, both from the community and also from Quinnipiac. So this is just me saying that we continue to try to strengthen our relationship, which I know in the past hasn't always been as strong as it could be. And we want to build off of the past, I would say, 18 months where we've been really in close communication. And this is another opportunity for that kind of conversation. the past, I would say, 18 months where we've been really in close communication. And this is another opportunity for that kind of conversation. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sal, and Sal will walk us through the master facilities plans, the tenants that guided us, and where we hope to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bethany. My goal is just to kind of take us through the key strategies that are embedded in the master plan. And like Bethany said, it's it's a facilities plan, so I'm gonna focus on some of the facilities parts, the what we're planning for buildings and renovations, and why we're doing certain things. And then Tom's gonna talk a little bit more after I'm through about some of the programmatic implications of some of what we're doing and how we're trying to enhance the overall student experience. So students want to, you know, stay on campus and and benefit from their time on campus. So the, one of the first key strategies, and I'm gonna put them out there in no particular order, but is to reinforce the residential experience, the student residential experience. And so this, from a facility perspective, is really two-pronged. We are not only going to build new beds and add new beds to campus, you know, beds that, and residence halls that are designed with features that some of our residence halls today don't have, to create a better environment for students to live on campus. But we're also gonna go through the residence halls that we do have and renovate them to make them better also. One of the key components of some of the planning that we've done was that some of our housing is more dense than students would prefer. So we do have triples and quads on campus, and we are, long-term, we are planning to reduce the density of the current buildings that we have down to singles and doubles, and add more overall beds through new buildings. One of the, the very clear goals, though, is to increase the student population living on campus and not increase the overall enrollment. Our enrollment goals are pretty much flatlined from here. So we're not expecting to add beds and grow like we have in the past. We're expecting to add beds to improve the overall student residential experience. The second key strategy is similar around the academic experience. So by enhancing our academic buildings, we will make a better experience for students on the academic side. And that, again, is renovations of existing buildings and new buildings. And we're adding space to campus, not, again, not because we need more space for more students, but because pedagogy has changed over the years. And where in the past, students might sit in a chair and be lectured to from the front of the class. Education today is a lot more experiential, more hands-on learning. Classes break into smaller groups during, during class to have smaller group discussions, then come into a bigger group discussion. So we, we have identified that we just need more square footage per student. So the master plan, which is really based on benchmarks in space, identify that we're shy a lot of square footage. So we have plans to add more buildings and renovate some of the lesser lesser-used buildings. We have a couple of buildings that have changed use over time, and one, for example, is our Communication and Engineering Building. The, it used to be the Law School and the Law Library, which is this big vast space in the middle of the building, still kind of is this big vast space in the middle of the building, and a renovation could make that space much more usable and more effective for our program. The third strategy is about expanding open spaces and promoting active outdoor lifestyle for our students. We have a a big push to educate students in health and wellness, not just in the classroom, but in everyday life and their future, and to really teach them to be good 21st century citizens. And so we're gonna add some open spaces, add another quad, improve the green spaces around campus, so there's more of them to get students out and about and live in a healthy lifestyle. The fourth strategy is about strengthening the pedestrian experience. And so what we're really thinking about here is, we did a really interesting exercise with the master planners. They they took a map of campus and the surrounding community, and they put in orange lines all the sidewalks. And you can see there's a little bit of spaghetti of sidewalks in the center of campus, and then there's no other sidewalk. So there's no connection to town. There's no connection to even Sleeping Giant State Park across the street. And so the goal here is to strengthen that experience and connect to, to connect to the community. And that's really becomes our, our fifth strategy is really improve the connection between campus and community. We really feel that the community is really just an extension of campus, and not only physically connect with sidewalks and things, which allows students and faculty and staff to like access Whitney Avenue and the shops and the eateries on Whitney Avenue, but also provide easy access for the community onto campus for whether it's sporting events or lectures or other open events that we have. And that goes into the bigger picture, some of the things that Bethany had talked about, some of the committees we've established, to really strengthen that relationship between the, the community and the university, and work together to solve problems, help implement the solutions to those problems and those types of things. So those are the five key strategies of the plan. And if if you, if you have the pamphlet, and you flip to page eight, we talk about the four near-term projects that we're really focused on. So like Bethany said, the facilities master plan, if you, if you think about all the pieces and the implementation of all the pieces that are on the plan, it's, it's probably a 20-year plan. I mean, there's building sites that are identified, and you can put this this big of a building here, but we don't necessarily have a program for that building today. And we're not planning, you know, I'm building that building today. But what it does is it kind of gives the community the idea of where we could grow, you know, in kind of the endpoint of that growth. So in the short term, the near, what we're calling the near term, there's four major projects that we're looking at. One is an addition to the Recreation Center in the middle of campus, and that's essentially our Recreation and Wellness Center. And so the, the project adds about 56,000 square feet to that building and brings health services and counseling under the same roof, so that the overall health and well-being of our students can be kind of championed from that one building, everybody under that roof. It expands recreation facilities, so weight rooms and elliptical machines, and there's a climbing wall and those kind of things. But it also adds properly-sized medical facilities for for the doctors and counseling facilities for others to, to give students a full spectrum of wellness care. And that project is actually, we're nearing the end of design, and we plan on, we've already gone through inland wetlands, or we're planning on going to planning and zoning probably as early as next month. So that's kind of coming down the pipe pretty fast. The other projects are what we call scoping. We'll begin scoping shortly and hopefully wrap that up by the end of the semester. The scoping really looks at the program that's gonna be in the building, and the square footages of those different components, and how big the building needs, the relationships of the different components to each other for proximity through the building. And the three projects that we're gonna be scoping is a new residence hall, a new academic building, and potentially a new school of business. So those are our four key, you know, projects that we have in the near, in near future. Monique, you had a question?
And when do you think that those would start after scoping, if they were to fall through?
So we're gonna start scoping immediately, pretty soon. And I'm sorry, you're on mute. You're on mute?
After you finish that, how long do you think they'll be before you begin construction? Will be in 2021?
No, so our, our, our major projects essentially kind of piggyback one after the other in our, in our, we have a 10-year capital plan. And for cash flow purposes, we kind of have to piggyback. So we, we have construction starting spring, summer for the new Recreation and Wellness Center. And that'll go through, that'll be done in, in the fall, we're ready for the fall of 2022. And then another building will follow after that, probably starting construction about that time. And then the next one would follow after that. And it's probably a, you know, a two-year, 18-month construction window for each project. So within the next five years, probably will be completed or underway for most of those four projects.
Thank you.
And Mr. Farmer had his hand up, and then Dr. Horstley does as well. And then Ms. Wetmore.
Thank you all for putting on this presentation and being with us. I guess I have a couple of questions in terms of the information that shall sent to us. Some of the dorms are going from six people to four people. So I guess part of the question is, is that related to COVID? And then my other question is, from my understanding, y'all are trying to provide more of an experience on campus versus off campus. So if you can just explain that distinction to me.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is have, this is a good time for Tom to kind of share with us more about what we're thinking as the student experience, and how it relates to, to some, some of that question. And then after he's done, I can talk a little bit about the de-densifying of spaces and in the, in the facilities piece of it. Tom, you wanna share?
Sure, I will just say on the de-densified piece, that we, we don't have, we only have a handful of single rooms on the Carmel campus. With our special accommodation, ADA requirements, we really aren't meeting the needs of our students. And so that is one of the rationale. And also, this generation of college students, many of them come from smaller families and are used to having their own room. So those are kind of drivers for the de-densification piece. But let me give you a more overview, and it is a pleasure to be here. As Bethany said, it's my sixth month here, and I'm really pleased to be here. I worked at New York University for 19 years, so it's wonderful to leave a city and join a town and be a member of a town. And so I'm really, and I live in Hampton, so I'm really glad to be here. One of the things that is really been important for me is I think about how do we bring a differential advantage to Quinnipiac in a time where the number of high school students eligible for colleges is shrinking in the Northeast? And so what Quinnipiac doing to make sure that we see ourselves as different and an advantage for students? And one of those ways is by having a residential experience that is more than just living in a residence hall. And so starting in the fall of 2021, we are moving to a three-year residential requirement for our students. And that goes to what Sal talked about needing more bed spaces. We think that, okay, you can have a policy, but the policy is, is really just a policy. What's more important is what's behind the policy. We want our students to live on campus to be able to do a number of things and have some outcomes. Some of those outcomes include peer connection, connection to faculty, and affiliation with the institution. And research shows if we can have those three things happen, students are more likely to persist and graduate from the institution. So how do we do that? We're looking at creating a couple of, kind of a residential curriculum for our students. And what those things would include would be, I call them kind of five values or five pillars. And they include focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, career and soft skills, wellness and resilience, grit, citizenship. How do our students leave Quinnipiac seeing themselves as a part of a community, the larger community of Hampton, and then the larger community of the state of Connecticut, larger community, the United States? And finally, how do we use the earth and its resources in a positive way, a sustainable way? So those are the five things that we are going to embed in our programs, our interventions, in what we teach our students outside of the classroom. So how will we do that? We're gonna be doing that through a smorgasbord of ways. One way is students could choose to live in what we call a living, learning community. Those are discipline-based communities where students see the advantage. If I know I want to be a nurse, I can live with other people who think they want to be a nurse. And we will add a faculty member who works with those students in helping them gain some further knowledge and understanding of what the nursing profession is. So we already have eight of those already at Quinnipiac. School of Business has one, School of Engineering, as I mentioned, the Nursing Honors Program. So we have eight of those. So that is one thing we want to build on. The second one is interest-based and theme-based housing. So what's different? Those are more interdisciplinary thinking. So things such as service. You don't have to be in a certain discipline to think about service, or social justice, or music. So those would be other options to be able to choose to live in. And so how would we do that? We plan to do that by having faculty members who would be hired as affiliates, who would work with these communities, and would take them into the community of Hampton, New Haven, and start to see music through the lens of out in the community. And how do we bring that back and talk about it, and bring guest speakers in and so forth? This is a phenomenon that's happening at many colleges and universities, so that is not new to Quinnipiac. It will be new to Quinnipiac, but it's not new to higher education. We look to bring in faculty and residents. So next year, we're building two apartments on campus in the residence halls, where faculty will actually immerse immerse themselves by living within the community. Great role models for our students. Some of those faculty members may have children, dogs, cats, et cetera, to really normalize and start to bring this intellectual curiosity to our students. We'll also be doing similar for our commuter students. There will be some students who will be able to opt out of the residential requirement if they need one of five criterion, if they're a veteran, if they're over 24, if they have a child, if they live with their guardian or family member, or they live within a 25-mile radius. And so those students, we still want them to be a part of this experience, right? And so they can be affiliate members of those residential floors. They will also have a commuter assistant, who's similar to what we call a resident assistant, who's a peer who works with that floor. We will do the same with our commuter students. We anticipate there'll probably be about 100 commuter students per year, maybe a little less than that annually. And so the last piece, which I think is really exciting, which I'm not sure other institutions have done, is bringing in members of the alumni to serve as mentors on these floors. And so we're working with our Development Alumni Association to find alums who want to come back and who have interest in some of these themes that I mentioned, or the learning communities, to talk about the career aspect of what it's like as an alum to have lived in a career in business, or in the health sciences, or in engineering. So that's a little bit of the plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, or we can save them to the end.
I, you spoke a little bit on it, so if you can, if there's more to share, I guess the community partnership, you know, Hampton is very much a college town, a ring city, and bridging that gap between the university and the broader community is something that I think we all aspire to see. So outside of this residential aspect, there was talk about a community center of some sort, or a community shared space. So how would that play into fostering these community relationships?
Are you talking about a physical space?
Yeah, about how, how, because they're, I'm pretty sure when I looked at the documentation, there was a community space or a shared mix space that was talked about with businesses, possible community venues being there. So how does that play into this experiential learning that you're speaking of?
Let me turn to Sal to talk a little bit about that, that, that project.
So we, we have a component in the master plan, which is essentially a mixed-use development on Whitney Avenue. It's in keeping with the mixed-use developments that you, you see in the town of Hampton's Plan of Conservation and Development. Essentially, brings additional businesses and housing to some of the, you know, currently vacant land or the parking lot that we have just off of Whitney. We have several acres there that, that can be developed. We have several acres there that, that can be developed. So that's a little bit longer-term vision, but it's, uh, it's the kind of development that, that I think the town is, is looking for. Though establishes a better tax base and it, while it, I think students could live there. It's not necessarily limited to just students. It could be housing for the whole town. The other thing we're, we're doing is we're, we're continuing to look at ways where we can help or assist in that type of development on, on, on Whitney. We've done it in the past in, in North Haven where we met with developers. And, you know, sometimes it's just sharing, you know, they want to build some housing. It's like, what are students looking for? And we just share, you know, our experience with students and what kind of amenities should be in the housing project if they want to attract students to it. And we also work with, with developers in any way we can. Like, we're actually in conversations right now with somebody, and we're talking about potentially swapping properties in order to facilitate a better development for the town. So, you know, those are just early conversations, but it's those kind of things that we continue to do to, you know, really kind of grow together.
Joseph, I can answer your question more on a programmatic standpoint, because I think it's an important question. I think when I talk about the pillars of citizenship and sustainability, and even diversity, equity, and inclusion, my hope is that our students would use Hampden as a learning environment for themselves and be able to be put into situations where they can do some service learning opportunities within the community and be much more connected. Our school of education, our engineering school, our communications program. I think there are really valuable ways, and that's certainly what I brought with me from where I came from, where our students were very much entrenched into the community and as helpers of senior citizens, to our youth, being mentors. I mean, I, I, I see the, the endless opportunities. And I think some of these theme and communities that we're creating would be really ripe for that level of community, for that level of involvement. And I would love for any of you who have sparked thoughts from my conversation today to reach out and give us ideas as we're in the infancy stages of these, these new programs. We'd love to partner with, with the Town of Hampden with, with some of these.
I can just add to that. I had talked about at the very beginning that we do have this Quinnipiac Hampden Community Partnership Engagement Council. And that's composed of people from the Town of Hampden, people who live near students, as well as some student representatives, people from that, you know, our dean of students. And our goal there is really to think about, I think, one of the members summed it up pretty well. Right now Hampden is a town with a college in it, not a college town. And we really want people to feel like it's a college town and that there's a lot of benefits to living in Hampden as it relates to having a college there. So we, we started off pretty strong. Prior to COVID, we had the Boobash. We had over five hundred people from the community come. Our students were on the quad. This obviously happened October before this October. And we had a free paper shredding event as part of it. We had free electronic recycling as part of it. We had food trucks on campus, and I think it was something that we could have really built on this year. And we want to have more things like that, where we're really inviting people to come to campus to be part of our community, as well as having our students go off campus. So I think Tom's ideas are great and will really continue to strengthen some of the work that our students are already doing. And we are engaging our, our students as part of that conversation, because we do want them to be citizens who see themselves as responsible neighbors and, and community members in Hampden. So it's just all part of this whole way that we're trying to approach our students and, and their relationship with the Town of Hampden.
I thank y'all. I want to be respectful to my colleagues, so I'm going to end my questions here and pass it along.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Dr. Horstley has a question.
Hi, thank you, guys. This is, looks like a very exciting plan, and I hope that you're able to accomplish all these aspirational goals. I have a few just suggestions. I'll email offline just from my experience at Yale and my own college experience that I think could be helpful. But I had a couple of questions that are relevant for our conversation about how we interact with the community. I'm curious if the Health and Wellness Community Center will be available for memberships from the community as a way to promote interaction between the community and Quinnipiac?
I mean, we, we haven't, haven't had many operational discussions yet. I mean, I think bringing the community to campus is definitely something that, that we're interested in doing. I think most of the conversation today has been around special events. You know, whether it be sporting events or lecture series or things like that. You know, one of the, one of the, you know, we do have gated, it's not a completely gated community, but we do have, you know, security concerns and things like that, if we're just allowing people to come onto campus. So I'm not sure that we, we go that far, but I, I think it is part of the discussions we could continue to have.
Okay, well, I just think it might be important, you know, to be able to promote health and wellness throughout the community. Hampden is certainly not in a position to be able to build its own health and wellness center and really building those kind of connections could be very fruitful. The other question I have is about, you know, one of the issues in Hampden and in Connecticut is that jobs are very hard to come by. And so I'm curious in this plan and in the future vision of what Quinnipiac looks like, is there a thought to sort of promote job, jobs for Hampden residents in Quinnipiac as a university?
Well, from the, from the facilities master plan perspective, all, you know, all that construction is typically done by local contractors and stuff. So there, there is an opportunity for, you know, payrolls for local contractors to expand by, by hiring locally. You know, I think, I think hiring community, I mean, I think all jobs are open to the public that we post. So I think that's probably an opportunity for, for folks if they, if they wanted to work for the university. Though we, we're not growing, that, you know, that is part of our plan. We're, we're not planning on growing, adding a lot of students or adding a lot of faculty and staff. So you know, there's not necessarily a lot of new positions coming on board, but you know, when physicians, whether somebody retires or they leave the institution, when physicians come open, I do believe that's a, that's an open, public process.
Yeah, I guess a, a commitment to hiring local folks would be a real step in the right direction and, and signifying that you're really partnering with the community in a way that will build a sustainable environment outside of your walls. And Yale has, has committed to this in New Haven. They haven't been as successful as I would like them to be, but I really think this could be a really strong signal that you do intend to partner with Hampden in a way that is going to lead to fruitful relationships for both of us. And then I guess the final thing is there was a lot of aspirational, hoping that the students would come into the community, et cetera. I work with a lot of undergraduates. I understand how they fit, they think transiently and short, because their life is not as long as ours has been yet. And so I'm just curious, is there a community service requirement that is required of undergraduates that would promote them to get into the neighborhoods and, and really build those type of relationships and programs?
So I've talked to the Director of Service at Quinnipiac about a requirement, and he has convinced me successfully that that is not the way to go. We, we want students to volunteer because they feel that this is something beneficial to them and to the community. When you make it a requirement, you get students who show up, but maybe don't really care about the task that they've been asked to do. So we do have a lot of students who volunteer. And when I say a lot, I would say that it is a large percentage. I wish I could give you exact numbers, and I'm working to do a better job of quantifying it, because I hear snippets from across campus about the great work that our students do. And I know Kat Schumaker's worked with some of them. There's various people in Town Hall who've had the opportunity to have fellows from our university. You know, whenever I went to the doctors the other day, one of the students there was a Quinnipiac student who was helping out, and we've been able to vaccinate a number of our students because they are in clinical positions and work in the community. So I do want to just emphasize that we already have a very large portion of our students who are very, very committed to this. Of course, we could always have more, but I think volunteering seems to be not the way that we will go about doing it. I think it'll be more through really empowering them and, and engaging them in conversations about how important it is in those living, learning communities that Tom described.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Dr. Horstley. I will just say, I've had the opportunity to work with the Quinnipiac fellows on many occasions, and they've always done exceptional work and been wonderful people. So great program. Ms. Whitmore.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it, being a Hampden resident. But I do have some questions as far as the requirement to be on campus for three years. I was wondering how you were going to enforce that? And can you really make them stay there for three years? I guess that's my question. I have had a lot of grandchildren in colleges that are beautiful, and they still want to move out on their own for independence. So if you could just give me a little insight into that.
Sure, I'd be glad to. What I would say is that this is not unusual requirement of private institutions to have housing requirements. As a matter of fact, we're one of the few that don't. So this is really kind of something that in higher education is more the norm than not. Yes, we can enforce it and we will enforce it. You know, it is quite easy for us to be able to say, and, and again, we are not, we are grandfathering this in. So it's taking place this year for the incoming first-year students and be their sophomore year where that, that program will continue, and then their junior year. So it's everyone who's coming into the institution knows that that's the requirement. So it's not like next year we're saying, oh, sophomores and juniors, you have to live on campus. They weren't brought into the institution with that expectation. So it's one that will continue over a three-year period.
Okay, and my next question is, do you think it will affect your enrollment at all?
I, I think it will affect our enrollment in a very positive way. Again, we're having a differential advantage in a way that's really saying, by doing this, you're going to be more connected to your peers, which the research says if students are more connected to their peers, they're more likely to stay at the institution than leave the institution. They're more connected to the faculty, they're more likely to stay. And if they feel a sense of affiliation with the institution, they're more likely to stay. For those students, if you look at the research, the students who are on residence are more likely to persist at a higher level than commuters do at any college or university. So we think all of the data and research proves or shows that it's more likely that they will stay. But it all goes back to what we're going to be delivering to them. Having these theme programs, having these learning communities, having faculty live in the residence halls, having alumni be a part of this process, bring them in, into the community. I think that's where the bonds are really going to be formed.
Okay, and I guess my last-
Can I just add one thing? Betty, can I just add one thing? I do want to recognize that there will be exceptions that are granted, just because I think it's important to recognize that we do have some students from low-income families who can't afford to live on campus, and we would not want to shut the door to Quinnipiac for those individuals. So, you know, somebody who lives nearby, who wants to commute, they can apply for an exception. We feel the same way about students who are maybe a bit older, but want to return to complete their education. And so somebody that maybe has a family of their own would also be granted an exception. There'll be a process. But we do want to be flexible with some of those more unique populations. Thank you. Sorry.
Your buildings are beautiful. York Hill is beautiful and everything, but they're hard to access if you don't have transportation. So are you, we've lost some students on Whitney Avenue that have been hit or, you know, pedestrians hit. So I'm wondering, is that in part of your plan, you know, to provide more sidewalks and accessibility to Whitney Avenue?
Yeah, one of the, one of the strategic initiatives is to actually create a physical connection between campus and the surrounding committee, community through sidewalks. I mean, that's, that's, that's one piece of it. And not, you know, not, we're not thinking just one sidewalk, okay, we did our job, right? Where there's, there needs to be multiple points where we can access the surrounding community. And, you know, students do it now, but they're, you know, typically walking in the street or, you know, walking on, on the side of the road. And, you know, it happens everywhere. There's not a whole lot of sidewalks in the northern part of, of Hampden. So I think there is an opportunity for us to, to create that physical connection. And we, we've talked about, you know, as you, as you develop that area, you provide access to Whitney, then you really need to have sidewalks going up and down Whitney in order for them to, to get up and down the street too. So I think sidewalks are a major part of it. And, and Bethany and I, when we spoke to the mayor, he said he was actually working with the state over some grants around sidewalk and sidewalk improvements. So there's a lot of potential there, I think.
Thank you very much.
If I could just say one more thing, I, I want to, I do want to add kind of a, to kind of an underlying thing I'm, I'm hearing is, you know, when we think about students in their younger years, right? And we frame the experience of going into town with a faculty member or adult presence, it brings a whole new way of engaging and understanding what it means to be a community member. And that's what we want to do, right? It, you know, so we bring students in the community, and a faculty member says, you know, there's some people, some of our staff actually live, I used to live in this community, and talk about the importance of being a good community member. And some of the things that we've started to talk about is, in that senior year leading up to living off campus, what kind of programs do we do in advance to prepare seniors to live off campus? And what do we do as talking about being a good neighbor? What does that mean? Taking in your garbage cans, you know, you know, not making a mess, not having parties late at night. All of those things that really talk about how they want to be treated when they become a landowner in a community and not be disrespected, right? And so those are some of the things I, I think that we will be able to do in this new model that we're creating.
You were, you were muted, Betty. You all set?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to just, again, say, the sidewalk plan is very exciting. It was one of the things that we talked about early on, and, you know, I did share my concern, you know, living so close by. You know, just the concern watching the students walk down Whitney in dark. You know, it always, the father in me is like, oh, good Lord, kids, you know, get on the, the side of the road. So I agree, Ms. Whitmore. Very happy to see that as part of the planning. And Mr. McDowell.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here with us this evening to go over this. This is incredibly helpful.
Does everybody know Brad's a Q alum? Yes.
Fellow as well.
They do now?
Yeah, no, I was part of the fellowship program as well. It's an incredible opportunity. Not only for students, but for the town. We've, we've, as President McGary mentioned, we've had some incredible projects done by, by students from Quinnipiac that have benefited residents in a lot of different ways. So I, the first thing I want to mention is the off-campus development. I, you know that this has been something of, of a priority of mine for some time now. And just the wording of the, the master plan, I just want to get a handle on it. With the goal of increasing the number of students living on campus, the plan recommends a more cohesive strategy for off-campus land holdings, including intentional ownership tied to the Quinnipiac mission. So does that mean that you'll be holding the lands that you currently own on Whitney Avenue, or is there going to be further acquisitions? Like, is that, are you just holding what you have, or do you plan on further acquisitions?
So, so I think we're, we've really looked at all our land holdings as, you know, from a strategic perspective. And I think, I think there could be further acquisitions. There could also be some divestments. I, I mentioned earlier, we're, we are talking about potential- I mentioned earlier, we are talking about potentially swapping some land for some other land in order to enhance developers' plans. And, and, and I'll give you a little bit of the details on that. So we met with somebody and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this here. And it was, it was retail and we thought that that wasn't a great place for it. And by moving it and swapping land, we might be able to turn it into retail and housing, which is the mix. You know, so instead of just getting a storefront, we got a storefront with housing above, which is exactly the kind of development, you know, the Hampden's plan of conservation and development is all about. So, you know, we're trying to work together to be good neighbors and figure out the right solutions. And, you know, that one has a lot of potential. So we're, we're hopeful that, that, that happens.
Okay. And do you see zoning as helpful to that mission? Or are there issues that you foresee? Because we were supposed to redo our zoning this past year. We still have, have to do that. Obviously COVID got in the way a little bit. We've done some minor revisions, but in terms of reassessment of our planning and zoning regs, specifically our zones, that's sort of been on hold for a little bit. Has that been reviewed and do you see that as, are there any concerns with our current zoning?
I will, I will let Bernie get into more details on that, but I can tell you that we, as an institution, have been talking to town planner, assistant town planner, and we're all in favor of some modifications to zoning requirements. Not to, not to do anything less than we already do it, but just to make, to streamline the processes. So it's just not such a burden to get things approved. You know, we, you know, if you talk to the building official or the fire marshal, they will tell you that we never built a code. We always build better. And we're not trying to cut any corners. We always do it right. But sometimes the current regulations are a bit of a stumbling block to, to getting things done.
Okay, before, before, because I know you said you wanted to let someone else answer, but if I can expand on that question for a moment, what are the changes that you would like to see? Are they more simple changes, like changes allowing mixed use? Are we talking about more critical changes? And then I don't know if you want to hold on this or if it's part of the same answer, but what implication are the wetlands over there going to have as well?
Bernie, you want to take it? I'll take it. It's, it's a good question. And, and we've been having discussions on and off with the commission about zoning regs as they pertain to kind of the, what I'll call some of the off-campus areas that I, we think are ripe for development. And there's, there's been proposals, various proposals. And, and you know, when we were there last, last week, talking to them about this plan, what I said to them was there, there's been a little bit of a distrust and they all chuckled because they realized that over the past 25 years. One thing we hope that this plan does is allow them to gain some trust. We're trying to be as transparent as we can. We want them to be part of the plan. And I think there was some recognition that hopefully that would help break down barriers and allow us, those of us who work in the brass tacks of what do the regs say, what are the impediments? And how do we clean it up? So what I think everybody wants to happen can happen. And that is to create the area proximate to the campus and hopefully be beyond to have, to be more user-friendly and more interactive with residents of the town and, and members of the community, of the Quinnipiac community, and also involve outside developers and property owners in that area to assist in that and to enjoy the benefits of it. In accordance with a plan that everybody thinks is in the best interest of the town. There are, there are some impediments under the current zoning. Some of the T three and a half and T four spacing requirements are difficult. And they're difficult in a town that is a maturely developed town to implement some of those strategies. So those things need to be worked out, cleaned up. And we have ideas about how to do it and we're hopeful that over the course of the next few months, we can get down to trying to have the discussion with the town about what, and the commission about where we think some of those issues are. As far as the wetlands, they could be, but I think we can work through those issues. New Road and Whitney Avenue are intersected in part by the Mill River and the associated wetlands. The Regional Water Authority is a significant landholder in that area as well. Some of the sidewalks that I think we envision in the plan will require some collaboration, which years ago, you may recall, the Regional Water Authority let land of theirs be approved for the construction of sidewalks to connect the parking lot to the main campus, which never happened. That's a long story, but I, I think we can make the connections in areas where there is the opportunity to do it. Those areas are limited, but I think we can connect New Road to Whitney. And then once we're, once we've made the wetland crossing, then that can branch out and pick up various points on Whitney along the way. So we have to be mindful of the wetlands, but in looking at it, there are opportunities to make that connection.
But I, I, I think, so spacing requirements that sound, I, I don't think that's going to be too controversial along Whitney Avenue. I think that, you know, it's not like we're talking about, you know, Shepherd Avenue here, right? So I can't imagine that being too controversial. With that said, and you know, Vice President Zamba has, and, and you know, her team has already done an incredible job with this, but involving the community members in that conversation. It's going to be a lot easier to have that conversation ahead of time and make clear your, your intentions in terms of just utilizing that space in Whitney Avenue in a way that would be beneficial for residents too. Any kind of proposal, as you all know, any kind of proposal that goes in front of planning and zoning or in the wetlands is going to have in, in an incredible amount of testimony and opinion that comes from not only this body, but from the general public. And so having those stakeholders involved in those conversations from an earlier stage is going to make for a lot better cooperation and a lot, a lot better long-term ease in terms of getting to the final, final product. I don't think I'm saying anything here that is incredibly, you know, new to any of you. But with that said, you know, perhaps it makes sense to involve us in those plans in the future and let us know, hey, you know, here's what we're looking for. We want to see T three and a half and T four. We want to see some of those spacing requirements change. Here's some, you know, three or four other things that we think would be beneficial to the community. And that allows us to have conversations with individuals in our communities and, and come back to you with concerns. And that completes that circle of communication. That communication is going to make long-term. It's going to make it into maybe two or three planning and zoning meetings instead of six or seven, right? And, and that can be a critical difference in getting something, you know, prepared for a 23 school year instead of pushing off for a 24 school year if there's construction that has to happen over the summer or something like that. Cool. My other, my only other question, I won't, I won't allow, like, I don't, I don't want to spend a ton of time on this. But as we're talking about incentivizing, as, as New England as a whole sees a reduction in high school students that are looking to go, looking, looking to feed into the college population. You know, one of the things that I think, and, and I think this predates most of your tenures with the university, but perhaps I'm wrong. I'm sorry. But I know at least during my, my time as a student, one of, one of the bigger concerns was the, the, the move away from full-time teachers and towards more adjunct professors. And, and so, you know, if I can just ask a little bit about where that stands and, and where that's headed. I know that nationally, the American university system is seeing that trend. And so of course, Quinnipiac is going to see some of that trend as well. I am, if, if it were to be that we're being a little bit more aggressive than the average, that might be concerning to me. Just because, as you mentioned, as, as the student population drops for a little bit, it is going to be more competitive. And, and that's going to be one of the things that, you know, students themselves don't just choose where they go. Their parents have a big, big role in that decision as well. And so academically, I think it's critical that we're seeing, we're, we're, we're at least thinking about that trend. So if, if someone could just speak to me a little bit about where that trend is going? And if that's something we're thinking about when we talk about incentivizing students to come to Quinnipiac University?
So I think, go ahead, Tom. I was just going to say.
Brad, I was going to say, you know, coming from where I came, you know, what I look at, and, and our provost isn't here, so she can't really talk about that. So, I mean, I don't feel comfortable talking about that. We'll give you a perspective that I think is important. We are heavily, as you know, as an alum, heavily a professional school. We do have arts and sign, but we are heavily a professional school. I know for my sons who went to more of a professional school, one of them, he was looking for people who are in the profession to teach him. So, you know, I, I think there is a balance there, as you say, but there is also a benefit for those in the professional, professional school basis to have practitioners in the classroom who are actually doing and producing work that can be taught to students. That is not to say that I can share with you the provost's vision, but I would say from the professional school standpoint, I think it makes a lot of sense to have practitioners who are doing full-time work as lawyers, as doctors, as communication experts, as health science experts to be in the classroom. But that is not to say that is a direction of the institution. I think our provost may connect with you and be able to give you a bigger vision of what she's looking to do long-term.
Yeah.
I do, I do think it's safe for us to say though, that it's a topic that we're well aware of as an institution. You know, rating, rankings, the different organizations use faculty to add junk ratios and things. So it's not our, it's not our plan to, you know, accelerate the hiring of adjuncts to, to a higher level. I do think we're, we're looking very closely at, at that relationship. So I can tell you, it's, it's not a strange topic. It's one that's on the radar and we are discussing. I mean, I have to agree with Tom. I think our provost is the better person to answer the question. But I've been in enough conversations to know that it is, it is also a concern of ours and we want to make sure we don't take that in the wrong direction.
Yeah, of course. And, and, you know, as, as an alum, right? I certainly got the majority of my best experiences from individuals who had practiced or were practicing in the field. So that's, that's not, you know, it's certainly something that makes sense. But Mr. Plardy, like you said, right, when, when individuals are assessing whether or not their students come in, there, there is debate about whether or not there's going to be a bubble in regards to private American universities, right? And maybe there will, maybe there won't, but it certainly makes sense for a university like Quinnipiac to be thinking about that and how, you know, you can remain competitive. And, and it's to the benefit of the, of the town, right? It's not, it's obviously, I'm not sitting here trying to tell you how to do your job, but it's, it's to the benefit of the town that the university remains, you know, strong and, and, and competitive. And so, you know, I, I thought it was worth mentioning, mentioning, I just want to make sure that it's something that's on your mind. If the provost will connect with me, that'd be something I'd really appreciate. Just because the numbers are something that I think would be, would be important to go through and take a look at. I really appreciate that. But like I said, my main goal is just to make sure that as we assess how to keep Quinnipiac and Hampden competitive in the region, I think that's going to be an important factor, looking down, down the line. It's going to be one of the more important factors.
I can, I can make an introduction to Annalisa Zinn, who is our VP for Academic Innovation Effectiveness. And she is our data queen as well. So I'm happy to, to make that introduction. I'll make a note.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. I appreciate you all spending your evening with us. And thank you for your patience.
And Brad, the fact that the population in New England for, you know, rising college-bound students is shrinking is something that's very, very much on our radar also. So, you know, what, what, what we have never done as an institution, it just stood idly by and let time pass by. So we're, we're constantly thinking about ways, you know, to, I mean, that's part of why we have this master plan and part of why we're, we're making it more of a living, learning experience for students is to create more value, to be more competitive in the marketplace.
Of course. And I, you know, I don't, I didn't expect anything I said to be really shocking to any of you. You are all leaders in your field, but you know, I, it's my job to sound like I know what I'm talking about. So I appreciate you humoring me and I look, I look forward to being in touch with Mrs. Zinn about, about that information. Because I think it's important, again, not just for the university, but for the town to remain competitive in the region. I think these are critical things that we have to be thinking about. So thank you very much.
And Brad, the enrollment area reports through me, so I'd love to be able to talk to you too. If you have ideas about how we could put ourselves better in terms of a recruitment standpoint and marketing standpoint, very happy to speak with you or anyone else here.
Yeah, definitely. I think, I think that, you know, that goes in hand in hand, right? The, the town being competitive regionally in terms of a place where people want to live and, and grow their business or start a business, invest in, in one way or another. And the university being a place where students want to go, where, where teachers want to teach, where, you know, staff members and professionals are looking at as, as a place of research and thought, right? I think it's, it's, these are some of the critical things we have to be thinking about. And I think, like I said, we are, we are both going to be in a better situation if we think about how we can be competitive together. So yeah, I'm always up for that conversation. I look forward to that. Thank you.
And we, and we think the master plan is one of those ways to have, have a advantage, differential advantage as well.
That was actually one more question I had that I, that slipped. Have students been brought into the conversation about the master plan? Has this been reviewed by anyone on the student body and what has their feedback been?
So we, we had students and faculty and staff, no, really the whole community, you know, probably a number in the hundreds of, of, of folks at different meetings with the, with the planners. Talk about experience, talk about good things, bad things, what's missing, what's needed. So the answer is yes. We, we are in the early stages of rolling out the master plan. So why, our community has received it, much like you have in the executive submarine thing. We haven't, we haven't started the town hall type of meetings with, with community first. I can tell you, I have two children, five, but two of them are currently at Quinnipiac. And they both have told me positive things about their friends commenting and stuff. You know, I think if, if you pay attention to the whole thing and you, and you look at it, you know, there's, there's a lot of good things happening. You know, if you get caught up on little things and don't really know everything and just, you know, shout out like young people try to do, you know, sometimes that they might be just misinformed. But I think the ones who are informed, they're excited. I mean, I've gotten from a couple of, of students that have told me they wish they were going to be around to benefit from, from some of the buildings. And that's always, you know, one, one of our challenges as a university is we have this four-year window usually. I'm not counting professional graduate schools, but we have this four-year window to, to make an impact. And if we start a, a plan for a building now, it's, it's really possible that it's not completed. And so that, that student who just came is actually leaving. So, you know, so far we got pretty positive feedback.
That's good. Yeah, it's weird to see Buckman and Tater's future in question, but certainly I could see some things that students would hope that they can benefit from. So this is great. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of your time and you being here with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell and Ms. Shoemaker.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. We have yet another meeting to have tonight. But I was very excited to hear in the residential curriculum that sustainability on behalf of Planet Earth is one of your platforms. And for those of you who are not aware, we have in Connecticut an exemplary municipal certification program for sustainability called Sustainable CT. I am the point person for that in the town of Hampden. And true sustainability is reflected in this program and that involves a strong and robust local economy. A core focus on equity and inclusion and all the benefits that accrue from. Um, as a core focus on equity and inclusion and all the benefits that accrue from sustainability actions as well as the one that everyone thinks of first, which is good stewardship of nature, natural resources and all of that. So, um, I just commend your attention that there's a wide variety of actions with well-defined deliverables in them that I think are perfect for student projects in a wide variety of uh, professional majors and academic majors that students are pursuing. So I don't know who would be the right person for me to sit with to sort of brainstorm how to connect with Quinnipiac um, and the town of Hampden to bring the two of us together on these actions. But I would love to be connected with that contact person rather than take a lot of time to, uh, uh, deliberate this tonight. Um, if, if, if that sounds like something that would be of interest to you.
Well, we, we have a sustainability committee on campus and I think, you know, maybe the chair, the chairs of that committee might be ideal for you to connect with. I can
That would be great.
I can tell you that our first, um, our first major building, the Recreation and Wellness Center, we are striving to be lead certified gold level. So, um, you know, it's, it's, um, it's a commitment that we were not taking lightly. And we, uh, the comment today was really all our major buildings should be, you know, should be strive to be gold or platinum. Um, I, I think, um, you know, one of the, one of the problems with folks who don't want to do that, it's just good design, right? I mean, it's, and it benefits, you know, one of, one of the drivers for, for the cost to achieve gold is, is the renewable energy, which will save us money in the long run. So, and you know, and, and, and in today's world, there's, there's rebates and benefits out there and the utility companies for renewable energy sources. So, uh, we're excited about it. Um, we think that's, uh, that's a good level to be gold. You know, I think some buildings are easier than others to, to push it to platinum, but I, I do think hopefully we'll have a platinum building in the future too.
Thank you very much. And buil- buildings are just the tip of the iceberg. Bethany knows what I'm asking here.
So, so I'll just add, um, so in addition to the, um, strategic plan, which we mentioned, and then this master facilities plan, we also have a sustainability plan that was just approved by our board in October. Um, it is a lot along the lines, there's not going to be, um, any surprises here as far as how we're approaching this. This is about a living, learning community. Um, and we have, um, as part of that living, learning, added an environmental science and an environmental studies program to our curriculum. Um, so that's very exciting. And one of the core, um, foundations, we also want to look at resource use, um, so energy use, waste management, transportation, um, and, you know, work, um, with the town on some of those objectives. So Kath, I think it would be great to connect you with the chairs. Um, we're in a bit of a, a transition period as we move from the committee that came up with the framework to now operationalizing it. So, um, we would love to have you be part of that conversation.
I would really look forward to that. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Schumaker, Ms. Baez.
Um, so I think you answered one of my questions already, which is, are we going to get any lead buildings out of these projects? So I'm really happy to hear that one of them will be gold standard. Um, and I think you share the sentiment that we should do as many as we can and try to get as close as we can to having green and sustainable buildings. Um, my other question is, uh, um, you guys are building all these new projects and, um, bringing this new activity onto campus and into Hampden. I was wondering if you um, have considered diversity, equity, inclusion efforts when it comes to hiring within your construction? So, uh, Councilwoman Horsley touched on this a bit, but I want to speak specifically about the workforce that you guys are going to have on your construction sites. So, um, again, Yale, we have an example right here, uh, our neighbor, um, which has 20% hiring goals for both minority workforce and local hiring within their city. We have an opportunity here to have, um, a percentage of goals that we have for your contractors that are coming on to your, their site that they can have a workforce goal for both Hampden residents as well as minority workers and for female workers. And that's something that's usually you have for state funding, but here now we have the opportunity to do it with your private organization and it's been done before. There's an example of it. I'd love to see that kind of diversity, equity, inclusion, um, to go along with your pillars for your student life, but also for your, your on the ground real, where you're putting your dollars at, right? Cause that's where that justice really happens. When you put your dollars into the pockets that, that have traditionally been left out of it. So, um, I'd love to talk more about different, um, initiatives, especially when those things, that kind of inclusion is paired up with training and apprenticeship, those things are long-term solutions and not just your five years of construction on the job and on your campus, but they really change lives. And I think it can be paired well with your civil engineering degree, which has a construction management portion. Um, have you guys thought about diversity and inclusion on your projects when it comes to your contractors? How are you hiring, um, your CMs and what kind of subs they're bringing on?
I mean, we do, we don't have any, uh, strict policy in place. I do think, um, the marketplace is evolving, uh, evolving. I mean, usually we have their public bids.
Public, yeah, always has it.
Well, they're private bids, but, um, they're companies that do public work also. So, you know, I think, I think, um, you know, uh, minority subcontractors and things like that are, are kind of part of the process that they bring to the table. But, um, I think it's, it's definitely a conversation for us to have. Um, if we want to kind of lead by example and, and put some, some, uh, policy requirements in place around that.
Yeah, I think that we know that policy leads the way, um, in all things in life. So they might say, okay, we have this contractor that we sometimes use, but to have a requirement or at least a goal for our projects in our town, I think would be wonderful. Economic stimulator for our residents as well as for our minorities locally. I think that could do a lot for us. So I would really like to have a conversation about how you guys are going to be constructing these buildings and what kind of, um, moral compass you have for those. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you, Ms. Baez. Uh, does anyone else have any further questions or comments for, uh, our Quinnipiac University team uh, this evening? Uh, seeing none, I'm just going to say, uh, you know, it was wonderful to, to receive your presentation. It's very exciting. Um, and it is, you know, a hallmark of this change in relationship between, uh, Quinnipiac University and the town. Uh, and that just, I think, gives us all hope for the future and, uh, and I also am eagerly anticipating, you know, there are a lot of great ideas coming from council folks and a lot of, uh, great input. And I really, uh, look forward, uh, to a time, um, when we can partnership on, on these different projects. Whether it be the sidewalks of the buildings or, you know, increasing, you know, community interaction, uh, workforce participation. Lots of good stuff, lots of positives here. So thank you very much from, uh, from the bottom of our hearts and we look forward to, uh, very productive and positive relationship in the future.
Thanks very much. Um, it sounds like there, it would be helpful to have some, uh, follow-up conversations. So Mick, um, if I wanted to connect, uh, Dominique with, um, Alicia, who's our, um, new GC and also our VP for HR, how would I go about, um, doing that?
Oh, we just, uh, you know, utilize Ms. Baez's council email.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great. So, um,
And, and little updates along the way, keeping us all abreast of what's happening too, probably a good idea.
Happy to do that. And please feel free, um, you know, to reach out to any one of us who are on this, um, Zoom tonight. We are happy to engage and we're happy to have conversations. This is, um, important to us and we want to have a open door to communication, especially if you hear things from your constituents, um, we want to be engaged in solutions. So thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, so we'll say goodbye to our Quinnipiac travels. Thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you. Have a great one.
Thanks.
And, um, a program note here, uh, obviously we're going to have to end this special meeting. Uh, then I'm going to have us take a 10-minute comfort break, uh, before beginning the next meeting. However, we are not going to end this meeting. So everyone just stay here. You can mute yourself if you're going to, uh, you know, walk away from the camera. And I'm sorry for our current heads were here, but you know, I think we do need just a little break. It's, uh, been, uh, quite a bit of time now. So a little break. So, uh, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh, move. Second.
Farmer, second by Ms. McDowell. All in favor of adjourning the special meeting of, let's say, council please indicate by saying or showing eye.
Hi.
Opposed abstentions. Our, our special meeting is adjourned at 7:59. And, uh, we will adjourn our, uh, regular meeting at 8:10. Uh, so just a quick break and again, sorry to folks who are, uh, here for the regular meeting, but I just think a little, uh, break is necessary. See you in 10.
Mister McGary.
Present.
Lewis.
Present.
The Shoemaker.
Present.
Mister Weber.
Here.
Miss Wetmore.
Here.
Fourteen present, nobody absent.
Very good, uh, thank you, Ms. Renta. Um, and we'll have our pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence, uh, and again, if we could, uh, keep in mind the families of, uh, the Winfrey family, Marquis Winfrey lost his life to, uh, gun violence. Um, and the family of Tomage Houseley, uh, who lost his life in a tragic car accident. Um, is there anyone else, uh, folks on council would care to name, uh, to keep in, hold in our hearts during their moment of silence?
I'm, I'm just add the life legacy of Dr. King.
Thank you, Mister Farmer, a good remembrance. Right, so if we could hold all that in our hearts and, uh, Ms. Dolan, could you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
Sorry, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Uh, thank you, Ms. Dolan. Uh, Ms. Renta, we have no public input this evening?
No public input came in today.
In oddity, but, uh, I guess that happens sometimes. Um, I have some, uh, brief remarks for the reports of the president. Uh, and then some updates on a number of items, um, and then we'll move towards our reports of boards of departments. Um, Mister Eetman, um, and, uh, Mayor Lang, uh, will be sharing, uh, an update on some of our town's finances. Um, before that, I just like I said, have some brief remarks. The insurrection and terrorist attacks in January sixth should cause us all to reflect. The images and stories coming out of Washington DC fill us all with anger and disgust. But if there's any way to create a positive from these horrific attacks, and let's all pray in whatever fashion is appropriate for you individually, that tomorrow is a celebration of democracy and not another historically tragic day in America. But if we can create a positive, it comes from our willingness to use the challenges of these moments in time to be introspective and consider our truths. I lived and taught, uh, through nine eleven. I lived and taught during the invasion of Iraq. I lived and taught through Sandy Hook. I lived and taught through the worst thing that can happen to a teacher, the violent death of a student and now I am teaching during a pandemic. During all these times, I've tried to learn and grow while processing these tragedies personally and with my students. During these times, we must all have the courage to face our challenges and respond with deepened respect for each other as human beings and to be guided by the truth. For the common thread in all the tragedies that I listed above is a belief in things that were simply not true, whether about a stolen election or the value of a life. We need to debate and interact in our part of the world in this forum with respect and a dedication to the truth. And the truth is, and I'm borrowing heavily from Dr. Horsley and Councilwoman Dolan, we must all be working together and moving in the same direction. We have to set clear and achievable goals to improve the fiscal condition of our town and the betterment of our community. The administration and the legislative council must work closely together to face these challenges and we should be proud of the work that we are doing. Having said that, the formal nature of the meetings with the M-FAC came as a surprise to the council. With that, I asked the mayor to clearly articulate the town's previous communication with the Marb or M-FAC and to establish a method to ensure that the legislative council and fiscal stability committee are kept informed of the work being done with the state. Even with the challenges that we face, I remain hopeful and optimistic about Hampton's future. But to achieve a better future, we must all work together. We must work together so that we can be the best council we can be, that the mayor can be the best mayor can be, that the finance team can be the best finance team in all department heads and work to the best of their potential. So I ask us all to renew our commitment to the future of Hampton. And I do have optimism that we can achieve a better fiscal state and a better community overall. So with that, I also have, um, you know, a relatively sad, uh, announcement that, um, I meant actually to make at our last meeting. But I will be asking for a recommendation from the DTC and asking for letters of interest to fill Councilman Gagliardi's vacancy in the second. I would like if anyone who has interest to contact the DTC, uh, for a recommendation or to send a letter of interest in resume if applicable to Ms. Renta by her February first meeting and with an appropriate candidate, uh, will look to fill the seat by our meeting on the sixteenth. In February, we're also looking to implement protocols, uh, to have live public input at our, uh, February meetings and for all future meetings, which will then incorporate civics clerk. Uh, we are utilizing input of our tech committee and some other members of the public in this work. And the hope is that as we move to a hybrid, in the future, we can continue having public input that is both written and, um, verbal during the meetings. Uh, there are some tentative dates, uh, that I sent out early, but I'll repeat now, so the public's aware of, uh, the progress that we are making uh, for a, moving towards a new schedule implementation of civics works. On, um, February twenty-second, uh, at the present time, uh, civics clerk is developing protocols or in communication uh, with myself and Mister Donnelly to develop, uh, the programs, platform specifically for, uh, the Handelation Council. On the twenty-second, we'll have a civics clerk training specific for the LC. Other trainings will occur, um, for other stakeholders. Um, staff members of both the legislative council and the administration, uh, prior to that. On the first of March, we'll have a mock legislative council committee and council meeting that utilizes civics clerk and we will have live civics clerk support during that. On the eighth of March, we'll have a mock legislative council committee and council meeting that utilizes civics clerk. Uh, this however, we will be, the training wheels will be off and we'll be, uh, having that, uh, meeting um, without support, but hopefully we will have practiced enough beforehand, uh, and but if the idea is still have another practice before we go live. On the fifteenth of March, we will have legislative count committee meetings, uh, finance, public safety, public work, economic development. These are all tentative, um, as we will be, uh, you know, growing our plan and changing our rules appropriately. On the twenty-second, we'll have committee meetings, environment, education, record and culture, uh, personnel, settlement administration, municipal planning and properties, and of course, settlement only if necessary. Um, that is, uh, again tentative and on the twenty-ninth, we'll have our meeting of the plenary body, the legislative council. Uh, future meetings would follow a week one committees, week two committees, week three legislative council meeting schedule. Obviously, these changes will have to be approved, uh, uh, will have to be, will require change to our rules would have to be approved prior to this. Uh, having said that, the rules committee, uh, that we created, um, by resolution a few meetings ago, I forget the exact date, we'll be meeting this Thursday, one twenty-one at five-thirty, and I'll ask Ms. Renta to create and send around, uh, the meeting links. Um, the fiscal stability committee will be having a joint meeting tomorrow, uh, with the, um, uh, charter review commission and then we'll be meeting the following week with a focus on um, some hiring protocols and, uh, reviewing our pension plan and, um, a variety of, of other, uh, items. So we do have quite a bit, um, on our plate and quite a bit to do, but again, I do remain hopeful and optimistic that, um, by all of us contributing the best we can, uh, we will, uh, we'll get there. Mister Shee, you have a, uh, point of personal privilege or?
Yes, point of, uh, oh, it's actually just a question, so I guess it'd be a point of personal privilege, um. Can I request that the, um, committees be, um, distributed out to everybody again, uh, in terms of committee membership and chairmanships and all that stuff? I'm just curious to see what those will be with the recent changes we've had to the composition.
Oh, uh, yes, of course, Mister Caesar, yeah.
Thank you.
Only clarification.
Move to our, I'm sorry, Mister Farm?
A point of clarification on that, uh, would we be doing that right away or would we be waiting for the appointment to, uh, hold the space up, uh, former Councilman Gagliardi held?
Uh, we'll wait for the appointment of, uh, whoever fills that seat. Um, but the committees will not be radically changed.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mister Eetman, um, Mister Eetman. Mister Eetman, there's Mister Eetman. Uh, Mister Eetman, you have a finance report for us?
I, uh, yes, uh, Council President, uh, but do you want the mayor to go first or do you want me to go first?
Uh, that's between you and the mayor, if you want to rock, paper, scissors, flip a coin, is, uh, not a, uh, consideration for me. The only thing I, I would mention, uh, folks may have noticed on our agenda, uh, we are including so that again, you know, I do not want the reports to become a time of, of questioning, uh, but obviously the reports may uh, engender questions, uh, which council people, uh, would want to be answered. So please, if you have a question submitted to this rent issue, will submit it to the appropriate person and then distribute the answers to everyone. So there's a part of our agenda now, um, you know, for questions and answers as questions submitted on previous reports. Uh, we did not receive any last time, but please, if you have questions, uh, you know, let's utilize this, uh, space to, uh, make the questions public and the answers public as well. Um, so Mister Eetman, uh, Mayor Lang, it is, uh, it's time for one of you to go. Alphabetically, he comes first, doesn't matter.
Respectfully defer to the finance director if you'd like to go, or I'm happy to go now.
Uh, you can go, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, good evening, honorable members. I hope that, uh, that, that you and yours are well and staying safe in these incredibly trying times. I come this evening to offer a brief update on Hampton's participation in the state of Connecticut's Municipal Finance Advisory Commission or M-FAC and to present thankfully, some positive financial news globally. So not to be confused in any way with the Marb. The M-FAC is a, uh, defined statutory group and I'm going to read it to you quickly. It's description as found in the Connecticut government, uh, website. The Municipal Finance Advisory Commission, M-FAC. The Municipal Finance Advisory Commission, M F A C, is a statutory eight member body appointed by the governor, composed of four members. Who are municipal fiscal or executive officers, three non-public employees and one representative of the O P M of the state. The M F A C is responsible for reviewing proposed regulations regarding the standards of municipal audit reports and working with municipalities. I thought the definition was important to mention. Hammond's participation was offered as an option voluntarily, and we actively and thankfully chose to participate quickly. And we're open to the discussion. Of our challenges, the challenges we face. But also to demonstrate that we've achieved some successes and we have some plans working currently and working plans for the future. To address problems that are decades in the making. And literally discussing and reporting on what Hammond has done over the last ten years in many ways and in other ways over the last five. We met with the M F A C first in mid-September and then again in December. And if there was not full articulation to the full council about this earlier. And that was an expectation. My apologies. Moving forward, happy to do that. The presentations went very well on both occasions and we participated and had an attendance from the town. Our finance director, our deputy finance director, Mr. Bernabi, Mr. Panico, our town auditor, mayor staff and myself who presented. The team approach was appreciated, it seems, and the board, the commission seemed to like the approach and the involvement. Of the group and the understanding by both the internal and external financial professionals and elected officials. Which apparently is not always the case, which was a bit of a surprise to me, but a pleasant one. While we submitted some PowerPoint pages, the. The reporting was mainly oral. And I tried to give a verbal history, if you will, of challenges that. The challenge faced, solutions going forward and solutions that we have been working back to the beginning of the Hammond pension reform. And. Internal and the internal medical self-insurance account. That was, as you know, in one point in the red. On top of serious pension crisis, the tune of nine million dollars. And how it was addressed. And the ten percent workforce reduction that came with that. We discussed the pension COLA in connection with and and apart from. The the P O B that we did. We discussed our ramp up and the fact that we had never before actually historically.
Mayor. Mr. Lang, you, you're muted, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you ended at his.
Okay, let's see where we went. Thank you. Were we at historic arc or not or not having achieved it?
Historically was never.
We had never historically made a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you so much. We had never historically made a hundred percent of our arc, as you know. And the COLA increases that we have bargained for reductions in. And then recently, the COLA reductions in connection with the correction of long term. Pension inaccuracies and the reduction in liabilities that those created and the reduction in annual cost. We talked about reaching a hundred percent of pension arc. And. In this. In this time and down its history, as well as the additional efforts being worked on to reduce our liability long term. And the council's efforts and commitment to committing to those arc payments. We discussed with the M F A C our efforts to reduce medical insurance costs, our second largest line item in the budget. And with success, both in fiscal twenty and so far in fiscal twenty one. We talked about debt restructuring as a tool to effectively restore our fund balance. Which thanks to the council's positive approval and actions on this during the budget is underway. At our first meeting specifically. We had a discussion of the fund balance deficit, which originally was thought to be in the six to eight million dollar deficit range after this audit. Which you recall was at the time projected even to be as high as a ten million dollar negative. At the second meeting in December. We were able to report that reductions of the anticipated deficit in the fund balance position. Was more in the range of three and a half to five and a half or six million dollars. And I'm extremely pleased to report to you this evening. That through the the very hard work and cooperation among departments. That our finance team and teams, and I say that because it's collected between the town and the board. Has worked on, we've reduced our anticipated fund balance deficit to less than two million dollars. And that's unaudited, but the audit will be coming very shortly. And that is really positive news to reduce something from from ten million to two million. Over the course of this time, it's positive news for our town and it's a much stronger spot to be building off of. It should be noted that while we have a negative and likely. A negative fund balance in in to the tune of almost two million dollars, well less than two million dollars in our audit on paper due to the timing. That our town is already back in the black when you consider the hand and premium, our bond premium that we received. With the most recent bond transactions. And that happened just after the close of fiscal twenty, but you'll see it noted in the audit. And that'll be important for for the market and for potential investors. Our meetings focused on the efforts large and small. But it really honed in on larger portions of the budget that really makes significant impact. And we've discussed this many times together, the Board of Ed, medical pension benefits. Which, as you know, alone makes up more than two thirds of our budget. Before a penny's even gone to any town department, any operation, any service, any program. We discussed COVID. Our preventative measures. Our efforts in getting a tan also preventative to make sure that we didn't have a cash, a cash flow problem due to. Cash collection and tax collection. And the different ways that COVID has affected the town budget globally in nineteen twenty twenty, it used to be in twenty twenty one, potentially moving forward. As well as estimates that were made. That probably could have been more conservative. And I take responsibility for that. And years out of our our control. In addition to the COVID, when the state's budget crisis such as is an example. Got us mid-year to the tune of six million dollars. We talked about the three R program extensively and the hard work the Board of Education put in. To try and reduce costs and to make more consistent the annual operating budget of the Board of Education. And to stabilize it, but also to ensure educational excellence and their efforts to racially balance our schools. We discussed the reduced borrowing that we've done. By our debt diet and the very little borrowing that's happened over the course of the last two years. That we implemented on the town side. And the sacrifices that occurred on the Board of Education side and the reductions in that three hour program. Still achieving safe school buildings, but reducing the overall cost that the board put forward and the council approved. We discussed multi-year budget planning that we are now doing. That was included in the fiscal twenty one budget by our finance department and approved by the council. And talked extensively about the council's efforts and commitment to to correcting. Structural imbalances in the budget. And steps taken by both the administration and the council. In the fiscal twenty one process and in the fiscal twenty one budget itself as we operate it. Accurate info on these meetings, which were very public, are available at the Connecticut website for the M F A C. And I'm happy to to mention that I I forwarded the minutes of both of the meetings to the council president and the council administrator to share with you. For you to take another look. We discussed with the M F A C. Really a global picture of the town's finances and they were they were pleased with the town's commitment to working together. To working on these problems in. The form of not just talk, but actual action, some of the some of which have been taken and the results which can be seen. And they particularly seem to appreciate that our fiscal stability committee. Thanks very much to the Legislative Council for having spearheaded this effort. Had representation, had represent, had representation working together on this board collectively. Between council members, members of the public, department heads and the board chair, the council president and the mayor. This was impressive to them to see the the collective buy-in to work on this group. Commissioners congratulated him for developing its first current plan and for approving. And for appearing rather before the commission. And that's a quote right from their minutes. At the second meeting. Extensive reporting, including discussion of the unaudited budget to totals accurate. Budget to total actuals from fiscal twenty and fiscal twenty one were submitted. In addition to projections. Updates on the corrective action plan. And specifically the correction action plan to address the previous audit findings. And far more in documentation was submitted to the state. But the presentation itself was mainly verbal and then a review of some documents and some Q and A. At the second meeting. Requests for some additional info were made, which our finance department is working on and probably already has prepared for. Our next meeting scheduled with them in January. Both these meetings were very productive. And I have to be honest, looking forward. We have no problem in going before the M F A C. It was productive. It was informative. There were financial professionals giving us ideas on what was going well, some things that they would suggest. As an example, they thought that having our pension calculations done independently might be a good financial idea. Getting ideas from a group of of pros like this is nothing but positive for the town. The experience, in my opinion, and and I asked Mr. Even to to add in if he feels differently, honestly, and I'd like him to do that, even if he feels differently than I do. Has been a positive one. Talking with the folks has been an experience and. They have delivered an expectation of us that we have to produce every time that we go before them. It's also offered us some validation efforts that have been taken that have been successful, even with many challenges still before us. I would ask if Finance Director Eetman has anything that he would like to to add regarding the first couple of meetings that we've had. And I, like I said, I forwarded you the first couple of sets of minutes. And I'll pause right there, Mr. Eetman. Is there anything that you'd like to add about about how the meetings went or your thoughts on them?
Hi, hello, everyone. Good evening, Council. Thank you, Mayor. The meetings went extremely well. I think the mayor did a wonderful job and excellent job in summing. Up for the council what transpired and what took place. And presenting a clear picture for for the M F A C. We are continuing to develop the reports that are necessary in order to inform the committee on what's been happening financially. Simply the same reports that the council received and the same information the council received, just at a much more reduced. Just more at a reduced pace. So instead of getting line by line, you're just breaking it down because they don't want to see all the data. So it's essentially. The summary reports that I present to you guys on a monthly basis, we're giving that to them. And then we're doing some other stuff with the audit that they asked us to request. So as the mayor stated, the the meetings have gone well. We're generally positive with the. With the the feedback data giving, we look forward to our next meeting in February with the M F A C.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. treatment. And I could tell you that that wasn't pre-planned because I didn't even tell him the street and I was going to call on him during this report. The next M F A C meeting, as you know, is is scheduled for a few weeks. And we plan to participate and are looking forward to it and and I invite you all to to log in if you're interested. They're public meetings. They're online now in this COVID world. And welcome you to 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 check them out. I I do again regret not offering the council, you know, a more formal update. Like those that we've earlier done, me a couple of weeks after the first meeting. And moving forward, I'm very happy to present or provide updates whenever there's a significant change or something noteworthy shared or or exchanged one way or the other. I thank you for the opportunity to update you and to clarify some of the misconceptions that have been in the public ethos. If you have any further questions, please don't hesitate to contact myself or direct me at your convenience. And I thank you very much for this opportunity. I know that you have a long agenda and already have received a long report. Thank you for your time.
Council President, we can't hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Thank you, Mayor Lang. Mr. Eman, you want to finish up your finance report? I would also just say if you have questions, please submit them via email to Miss Renta.
There are points of clarification.
Make them public and the answer is public.
There are points of clarification.
I'm not going down that road. Mr. Eman, if you would like to continue with your finance report, please.
Yes, thank you again, Council. Thank you again, Council President. This is the finance report. The finance reports were given to the council earlier this afternoon, both a summary as well as the actual. Report on the expenditures as well as the on revenues. To date, the town of Hamden has received a hundred or collected, excuse me, a hundred and forty three million dollars. Or approximately fifty eight percent of the fiscal year twenty twenty one adopted revenue budget. The remaining budget to be to be collected is a hundred and five million dollars. Our tax office has done extremely well, thanks to the hardworking individuals down here. We have collected sixty percent of the property tax revenue for that was budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Many council members have asked about the tax anticipation note or the tan. We've utilized again the same five million dollars to cover payroll, medical expenses. The tan will be finalized and mature and pay off in February of twenty twenty one. Thanks to the TAN and having that liquidity in our in our. In our in our accounts, we were able to. Use the the money going forward to be able to provide to pay for the payroll and the medical expenses that was arise, but also pay it back. Potential revenue liabilities. As as of this report, COVID nineteen reimbursement from the federal government has not yet been confirmed. The town's adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one contains a six million dollar COVID reimbursement line for revenues lost. For COVID nineteen. For the remainder balance of the fiscal year, we will keep the Legislative Council informed as a status of this account. In addition to the COVID nineteen revenue line not materializing, other things have arisen or other concerns have arisen. The town has seen low collections in the first half of the fiscal year. And its fee for services in certain particular categories or by certain departments. In particular, the COVID pandemic has affected the town building department, has affected the arts and culture, has affected the public works department, recreation department. And miscellaneous section of revenue. And all of these various revenues account are vastly below the fifty percent collected, which is about halfway year. Which is a concern for us and finance and we believe it should be a concern for the council. The town has expended a hundred and twenty three million dollars or fifty percent of the fiscal year twenty twenty one adopted. Budget similar to fiscal year nineteen and twenty, the town has been keeping spending in level with the with the adopted budget. The expenditures will fluctuate throughout the fiscal year is based on the timing of payments and liquidity available or cash available. And the ten has helped really significantly with that and we're really excited and thankful that the the council gave us the authorization to do the to do the ten. It is imperative that the town generate additional revenue to avoid a potential deficit for the for the current fiscal year. Which is which is something that we hopefully will be able to be discussed in further. Potential liabilities or savings, medical costs. Due to COVID, the town is preliminary projecting a favorable year in balance. This account will fluctuate throughout the fiscal year based on timing of payments for medical claims. Which may be realized in the ensuing fiscal year. We're also a little concerned that the union concessions, where the two point five has not yet been materialized. But it is our understanding that the the union discussions are currently ongoing. And we look forward to giving the council an update when one is provided. Again, this ends my financial report. If the council has any questions, again, please follow the protocol laid out by your council president. And as always, if one council member asks a question, everybody will get the answer per the. The rules that finance operates under. Thank you again for your time, everyone. Council President, I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Eman. We have no reports of council liaisons. Moving on to approval of previous minutes. May have a motion to approve the minutes of twelve twenty-one twenty twenty, the special meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Horstley, seconded by Ms. Wetmore. Discussion. Mr. Farmer, is that a discussion on this item, or is that handout from before?
It's still the handout from before.
Any discussion on the on the item we're on, the approval of minutes? All right, so you know, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
There are not one.
Okay. The minutes are approved with one abstention. May have a motion to approve the minutes for January fourth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Row Lewis. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Wetmore. Discussions of the minutes of January fourth, twenty twenty-one. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes for January fourth are approved. We do not have a consent calendar. Move on to our regular agenda that requires a two-thirds vote of the members present voting for suspensions of the rules under Section fourteen A, the standing rules. May have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Farmer.
Point of clarification, that was me.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Move on, Mr. Caesar, second.
Second.
Seconded by a number of people. Seems like Miss Shoemaker got in there. All in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
To an opposition? The rules are suspended. Item one, refund of property taxes collected prior to July first, twenty twenty, six hundred thirty-two.
So moved.
Have a motion. Moved by Mr. Farmer. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Wetmore. Mr. Farmer, would you like to speak to the sign as the maker of the motion?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item one? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions. Item one passes. Item two, refund of property taxes collected between July first and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Like a update, totaling four thousand eight hundred thirty dollars seventy-six cents. May have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Farmer, second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Horstley. Any discussion, Mr. Farmer, as the maker?
No, I appreciate it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions. Item two passes. Item three, another refund of vehicle taxes collected between July first and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, totaling five thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars thirty-six cents. May have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Miss Bonnades. Discussion, Mr. Farmer?
Nope, one more.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes. Okay, we have a lot of appointments and reappointments. Item four, appointment of Jim Paschrell to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Caesar. Sounds like Ms. Horstley got the second in there. Mr. Caesar, as the maker of the motion, would you like to speak to it?
I'd just like to thank Jim Paschrell for his service to the town. This is great that he's serving on this board, and I'm pleased to support him. Thank you.
Agreed. I think his expertise and, you know, extensive knowledge will be very helpful on the Board of Assessment Appeals. Further discussion? Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, I would just like to take this time in the sphere of Councilmen Anis to thank everyone for their participation and to being part of this process. So kudos to everyone who sent a name in. These are multiple-year appointments. There is much work to be done, and it can't be done by a few individuals. It really takes a village. So kudos to all those who sent in their names.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Well-stated. Further discussion on item four? Nope. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Opposed? Mr. Farmer in opposition? Abstentions? Item passes.
Can I move to cluster the next set?
I'm sorry?
Can I move to cluster the next set of reappointments?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, fifteen, sixteen?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion is to cluster items five through sixteen, Ms. Baez?
Yes, please.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Baez, seconded by the Shoemaker. Discussion, Mr. Farmer?
Nope.
Yeah, good idea. Let's get them all done. And while during this, if anyone wants to speak to a particular person, you know, as we might do, you know, feel free, we can talk about them all in one fell swoop. All in favor of clustering items five through sixteen, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, items five through sixteen have been clustered. May have a motion to approve items five through sixteen.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Horstley, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Ms. Horstley is the maker of the motion. Would you like to speak to it?
Um, no.
Further discussion, Mr. Farmer?
Nope.
Ms. Wetmore?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to just point out Victor Mitchell, who's been a very involved person in the community, and I just think he will be excellent on the Town Center Committee. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer?
No.
Mr. Caesar?
I just want to speak on behalf of Sarah Morrow and her service on the Park and Rec Commission. I want to thank her for her service as well. And also Rob Gacharo for his service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just really great public servants to the town, dedicating their time there. I'd appreciate it. Also, is there a problem with the hands being raised? I see hands being raised, and there's no nobody speaking on it. I'm just curious, but is there malfunction with our room or something? Because hands are being raised and they're not being raised by the person. Maybe, I'm not sure. Thank you.
No, I think everything's functioning well. And I agree, especially the Town Center Park Commission is extraordinarily active, and I know Mr. Mitchell and Mr. DeAndrea have been very helpful in the Town Center Park Commission, fulfilling its mission. So very happy to see them coming back. And I did, when I first served on Parks and Rec many moons ago, Ms. Morrow was there, and glad to see she's still there. And Mr. Sweeten, Mr. Sweeten came in there as well. Further discussion?
Yep.
Mr. Farmer?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Mashapi, and the work that she's done on planning and zoning and being attentive to listening to all community members. I think it's pertinent that we have people who are willing to listen to community members from across the aisle, and I definitely appreciate that. So I just wanted to share that sentiment.
Agreed. Mr. Caesar?
Thank you, Justin, for bringing that up. I wanted to also mention Michelle and her dedication to the town as well for her service on planning and zoning, definitely a tireless servant as well, works very, very hard in terms of time and effort. She really does a great job as a public servant. So just thank you, Michelle, also for your time. Thank you. Thank you, Justin, for mentioning that. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor of items five through sixteen, as we've together, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Items pass. Ms. Baez? Oh, my goodness. How? It doesn't seem possible. What a, oh, my goodness. Look at that hair. I'm so jealous. Goodness. That's adorable. Thank you, Ms. Baez.
You're welcome.
Item seventeen, bid waiver associated with the Happiness Project billboard campaign. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. McDowell, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Do we have, Ms. Morrow, is Ms. Rubino here to speak to this item?
Fact is, Mr.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay. Ms. Rubino, would you care just to sort of outline this item for us?
Yes, basically, Outfront Media is the only game in town for billboards. They are the only vendor that owns billboards in Hamden. So we had no choice but to go with them. But they have been very, you know, they've been great, so. That's it. And I'm just wondering if there's something, if there's some procedure the town could go through that if there is only one vendor, that we wouldn't have to go through this process of a waiver if there is only one vendor that could provide that service? Just curious.
The bid waiver process is the process, Ms. Rubino, although your point's well-taken. But this, I think this is relatively unique situation. Usually, the sole proprietor portion of the you know, the bid waivers are because it's, you know, there are other companies that could do the work, but this is the one that is most appropriate or the only one in our area or the only one that services the particular machine we bought or something. This is unique in that ordinarily, you would think we would be able to get bid waivers on both billboards, apparently not. But I take your point, and we do thank you for taking the time to be here. Do you want to give us a brief talk about the Happiness Project? You've talked about it before, but, you know, for the benefit of those in attendance and you know, who might not have caught it before.
Sure. So this will be our fourth year of doing a billboard campaign. We've done substance abuse prevention for three, two years, and then the last year we did COVID-19 prevention. And this year, we're going to be doing mental health, just general mental health that every person can relate to, and ways in which we can improve our mental health. So this this campaign is open to all students, grades kindergarten through twelve. There will be three finalists in each age category, and their their billboards will be displayed throughout town. Probably the end of the winter, they'll start going up. And there will be a small amount of like scholarship slash prize money for the high school winners, which is provided through TV Bank affinity program. And we haven't gotten any submissions yet, but I did talk with the Director of Arts today, and he mentioned that all of his teachers at the middle school are requiring the kids to design a billboard. So we should get a lot of submissions this year. So I'm excited about it.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Rubino. It's a great program, and we appreciate you bringing it to us today. Mr. McDowell?
You're very welcome.
Thanks. Would you like to speak to the motion, Mr. McDowell?
Yeah, I was just curious which billboard. I know we've moved. This is going to be the one across from the high school again?
So there are, there'll be billboards throughout Hamden.
Okay.
We'll have actually twelve, nine winners. So there will be each first place winner gets three billboards, second place gets two billboards, and third place gets one billboard. And so there'll be nine different designs, but like eighteen different billboards throughout town. So the winner will go across from the high school, and then they're like on State Street, Dixwell Avenue, Whitney, all over, all over Hamden.
Yeah, I know. We used the one by the middle line over there by the middle school, too. All right, cool. And how are we? Madison, neither here nor there. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Appreciate you taking the time for this.
You're welcome. And if you were going to ask about the selection, the Hamden Youth Network is, they select them. But anybody is welcome to be on the, and there, we don't put the names out of the students, so no one knows who the students are. But the winners, you know, you all can participate. We'd be happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Mr. Farmer?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rubino, for all the work you do. I also appreciate you answering just a clarifying question of, I assumed there was only one person in town who had billboards. So I appreciate you being thorough in answering that. The only other question I had was that for some of the starting dates, it started for some of the starting dates, I don't expect us to have billboards up. I know that we're limiting it to a certain window of time, but the start date on the paperwork has us having it for a longer period of time. So I assume for the time that we will need it, we won't catch any extra charges. It will just be the same rate for the eight weeks that we need it, right?
Exactly right. And there will be some crossover because, you know, things have changed over the last few months. But each billboard will be up for twenty-eight days. That's what we're contracted for.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Further discussion on item seventeen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Item seventeen passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Rubino, and have a nice night.
Thank you. You all as well.
Item eighteen, order amending the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget fire department. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Farmer. Seconded by Ms. Row Lewis. Chief, this is a pretty a pretty exciting change you're making. Could you, could you walk us through it, please?
Sure. Good evening, Councilpeople, and thank you for inviting me to speak this evening on this first prong of diversity planning that we're doing on the fire department. Does everybody have the memo that was sent over for this? So you have the biographical history of Sam Jones. And his family's given, you know, permission for the use of his name in biography to support this scholarship. From the financial aspect, I wanted to bring you up to date because my intention is to take this from the EMS revenue line, raise the EMS revenue line expectation fifteen hundred dollars and correspondingly raise the training line, which is where we would pay the invoice for the scholarship from. So since the beginning of the fiscal year, we've collected eighty-four thousand five hundred and five dollars in EMS revenue. That's fifty- in EMS revenue, that's fifty-six and a half percent at twenty-eight weeks. For an average of three thousand twenty dollars a week. If you extrapolate that out, for the coming twenty-four weeks, that should be another seventy-two, two thousand four hundred, give or take. Which should put us over our estimated revenue, uh, I estimated it at a hundred and fifty thousand. That's what the council gave me as a target, and we should come in around one fifty-seven or slightly higher. So the idea would be to um raise the revenue expectation fifteen hundred dollars to allow us to spend the corresponding fifteen hundred dollars and secure a um, a place at the Yale New Haven Center for EMS for uh an eighteen-year-old graduating Hamden High School student this year. Um, because I didn't want to lose the spot, I've already reserved the spot in July. Um, you know, pending the vote is whether or not uh we asked them to let it go, but um, we did reserve the spot in the class uh in July.
Thank you, Chief, uh, excellent program, well thought out, uh, good goals, all just overall excellent. I hope that this serves as a model uh for all our departments in ways to move forward and increase the diversity of, of our workforce. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Farmer, you were the maker of this motion?
I was.
Uh, would you like to speak to it, sir?
I would, uh, and I appreciate the chief uh bringing this back to us. And remember earlier in the year, can't remember exactly when, um, that this was brought up in discussion. So I'm happy to see us at the tail end of the year uh, uh, following through with that commitment. Uh, I guess my question is, it says a person of color, so uh, is that still the intention to make sure that? I'm guessing in this case, a person of color would probably be someone black or Hispanic, but I'm guessing it's open up to whatever the spirit that the family uh, uh intends it for. So I don't know if you can speak to that, I don't know what their intentions are, but nonetheless, uh, the town, we are grateful uh for opportunity to train more diverse people.
Um, you know, I'm sensitive to the use of language, and I didn't, I didn't want to automatically assume um, a person of color was from one specific place um or another. And so my intention is to make this as broad as possible in order to achieve greater opportunity for the most amount of people. Um, you know, parenthetically, I want to have nothing to do with choosing um the scholarship person. We want to leave the care and control of that to the Counseling and Career Pathways Department at Hamden High School. Um, we, we sent the uh, we sent the entire curriculum um that uh, that Yale uses, uh, you know, to um, to that department. And so, um, uh, you know, we have every expectation that they'll do a good job. Um, you, you know, this is part of, this is, this is only one prong in, in a much larger plan. Um, uh, we're, we're also partnering up with uh Hamden Public Schools and Gateway Community College um in the inception of the Health Sciences and Public Safety Academy, which we hope will start in September for grades nine through twelve. Um, very similar to the STEM Academy and uh, uh HECA. Um, and of course, I'll be talking to you in budget season about uh, about other uh things that we want to do in order to uh, in order to fill out this plan.
No, I, I appreciate that, I know, you know, I just want to make sure, uh, as I'm sure all of us do is that, you know, a Hamden kid can be able to, from whatever socioeconomic background, whatever racial background, can grow up in their own community, go through a program and say, you know what? I want to be on my fire department and I want to give back to my community. So I, I want to make sure we're in the spirit of that, and in any way that I or the council at large can help in that process, uh, don't hesitate uh to reach out.
So to your, to your point, Councilman, um, this, this would uh allow the, that person, when they're successful and they pass the examination at the end, to practice as a certified EMT in the state of Connecticut. Um, the placement rate out of these classes is, is very high, um, with ambulance services, hospitals, uh, you know, and eventually, eventually fire departments. Um, the goal of this program and the rest of the program is to create uh, create awareness, opportunity and support. Um, you know, through the process, that's, that's what we're after.
So I, I thank you again, and I think this family, um, you know, for commemorating of this man's life and his, his uh, his, him being a trailblazer and creating a path for others to follow. So, thank you.
Roger that.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer, Ms. Horsley.
Um, I just want to say thank you, um, Chief Merweed for establishing this um pipeline building uh program for um Hamden students. Um, hopefully to go into the Hamden Fire Department, but just in general, um, the pipeline is the hardest to um, to build and maintain. And so any ways that we can do that in all of our fields, um, the better. And so I just want to say thank you, and hopefully we can maybe start a nonprofit that funds more of these scholarships somehow.
Wouldn't that be great, yeah?
There would be a lot of interest in the community, so thank you for getting this started.
You're welcome, you can't, you can't build the championship team without a good feeder program, I think everybody that knows sports knows about that. Um, you also can't uh change outcomes unless you change the systems that produce the outcomes, right? And so that's, you know, that's, this is one small step, but it's a step forward and that's what we have to do.
Yeah, uh, further discussion on item eighteen? Ms. Baez?
I want to say amen, Chief Merweed.
Is anyone going to try and follow that? Okay.
I, I technically don't think you're allowed to.
I see no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions, item passes unanimously. Chief Merweed, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you all very much.
Uh, item nineteen, in order to approve memorandum of understanding between the town of Hamden and U P, U slash cops, Officer Enrique Rivera Rodriguez, uh, police union, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. McDowell. Is Chief Sullivan with us? Uh, he was here before, there, uh, Mr. Uh, Chief Sullivan, would you just care uh, explain uh this one, I believe as well, we've done this before, but if you could just sort of run it through? Clarification?
Uh, please tell Enrique Rivera Rodriguez is an active member of the Connecticut Army National Guard and has been assigned to attend an advanced leadership course from January fourth, two thousand twenty-one to February fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Officer Rodriguez's military pay is substantially less than base pay as a hammed police officer. So we're here today to ask for uh the council to approve uh the difference in the pay from uh the military by the Hand Police Department.
Thank you, Sullivan, Mr. Farmer is the maker of the motion, would you like to speak to it?
No, I, I, I think, you know, it's self-explanatory.
Uh, further discussion? Uh, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions, item passes unanimously. Chief, thank you very much for sticking out with us tonight.
It was one opposition.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who was in opposition, I didn't, did you capture Ms. Renta?
This is stolen.
Miss Dolan, got it.
Okay, uh, please change, record was not, uh, with one in opposition. Okay, uh, thank you, Chief Sullivan, much appreciated. And that is the last item on our agenda, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by, it looks like Ms. Bonnades actually got in there first, Ms. Bonnades, motion to adjourn, Mr. Farmer, second. Uh, all in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, we are adjourned at nine eighteen PM. Uh, thank you, everyone, for uh your time this evening, and please stay safe out there. Um, you know, the COVID is coming.
Good night.
Everyone.
Night.
Good night.